Okay, thank you. Thank you, Kathleen, and good morning, Madam Chair and Councillors. For the record, Oliver Jaco, Community Planning Director. Bob Poole, County GIS Manager will be giving the presentation this morning, Councillors, and we would like to focus on the two models that the council have not seen. So I know you've seen the other versions of the of the five models that we're going to be discussing this morning, but we will focus on the two. Those two are one that uses thirty-four percent for infrastructure and hold of twenty-seven percent for schools and parks. And then the second one is the one that is similar to the Building Industry Coalition version three that you've seen before, except that it reduces available land or account for ten percent of market factor on the supply side. So with that, I'll turn it over to Bob. We are here to answer questions after his presentation. So thank you. Bob, take it away.
Thank you, Oliver. This is Bob Poole. I'm the GIS manager, and I've been working on the vacant lands model through this process. And with that, you've asked for a couple more iterations of the vacant lands model, so I've done that, and we'll go through those. Next slide, please. And we're really focused on the residential model here with these five runs. We did not really focus on the commercial side of it because the changes were on residential. Next. And we currently have run five versions of these, and I'll go through them all. The first one is the baseline, which is really the 2016 adopted version of the vacant buildable lands model. Version two is the 2020 PAC project team proposal, which has the residential infrastructure at thirty-one and a half. We also have city center being a mixed-use designation, as well as the Vancouver Commercial Comprehensive Plan designation as being a mixed-use classification. Version three is the one that the BIA Coalition has recommended, and that had the residential infrastructure at fifty-four point seven percent, the onsite infrastructure at thirty-four percent, and the offsite portion of that at twenty point seven percent. It also asked for a twelve point five percent deduction on low-density residential in Ridgefield, and it also removed the mixed-use classifications in city center in Vancouver and Vancouver Commercial. Version four, which was new for this, is using the same as version three, except we put the twenty, we added back in the twenty point seven. Really, the offsite infrastructure is no longer part of that model. Version five is the most recent one, and this is the same as version three, except that we added ten percent to the residential market factor. So we interpreted that to mean that we added ten percent to the vacant and ten percent to the underutilized. So that would give us twenty percent on vacant and forty percent on underutilized. Next slide. So with that, I'll go through the series of slides that we've shown before, and for each of these slides, I will show it by acres and by housing. That's really multiplying that acres by the densities based on the comprehensive plan designation. So with that, you can see the baseline has about sixty-six hundred acres. The PAC proposal increases that to seventy-two hundred acres. The first BIA proposal reduces that to about five thousand acres. That point, put the offsite, take, put the offsite infrastructure, remove that, it goes back up to sixty-eight hundred acres. And then taking version three with an additional ten percent off for market factor drops it by about ten percent, which is down to forty-five hundred acres. So that's kind of the range of the models at this point. If we go to the next slide, we can see that same information converted to actually additional households that we expect to be built. They range from forty-five thousand with the existing. That's fifty-four thousand for the PAC project team, thirty-six thousand homes for the first BIA model. The second one with the offsite infrastructure removed is forty-nine thousand homes. And finally, with the additional ten percent market factor, thirty-three thousand homes. So quite a range there. Next slide. This shows the same information, but we are breaking it out by the different cities in the UGAs. As we said before, most of the, all the UGAs, except the Vancouver UGA, are in urban holding. They cannot be developed. So they need to be annexed to be developed. So it's kind of why we take that out, and it becomes a substantial amount. For example, Battleground has three hundred and eleven acres that are in urban holding. We can also see here that the vast majority of the additional houses are going to be in the Vancouver UGA. Next slide. So this is that same slide, but we've multiplied it by the densities and come up with households. We can see up to twenty-two thousand households in Vancouver in the PAC project version, Vancouver UGA, and that's the vast majority. Next slide, please. The next thing we can do is look at this. I call it the VBLM use or the VBLM yield. It's a little bit confusing, but really, it's basically by the land use, except for like then the vacant platted lots is just a category off by itself there. Looking at this, we can see that the vast majority of the housing available is in the residential low-density category. There's five thousand acres, fifty-two hundred acres in the baseline, and five thousand acres in the PAC project team. Interesting, there's a decrease there. And going on down, you can see there's thirty-three hundred acres in there for the BIA one, forty-eight hundred for BIA two, and only three thousand in BIA three. We switch that to housing. Next slide, please. So here, you see the same thing multiplied by housing. And here, you can actually see that vacant platted lots show up in the purple. There's twenty-seven hundred houses out there in vacant platted lots in the VBLM PAC project, which is a significant number of houses out there that we've added with the new model. Next slide, please. And the next one kind of looks at the Ridgefield request, which was the twelve point five additional deduction. And we can see that doesn't happen in the baseline or the PAC project. They're the same. But then you do see the next three models where we've removed twelve and a half percent from the Ridgefield. And we can step through this and see it by houses. Next slide. And the next slide, again, we break this down by land use types. Next slide, please. This is the same information by housing count. Next slide, please. And there you go. Those are the results of our work for the past couple of weeks. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I had a question right away.
Councillor Medjig.
Thank you. Bob, thank you for that. I think that's really very helpful and informative modeling, and the slides were very clear in depiction. The question I had was I was somewhat, I would have expected the reverse to be true. When you showed the different modeling for housing, and it was pretty much the first slide that you showed on the housing. And what I took from that with the model, the last version of the BIA adding the ten percent, you know, it showed residential housing being a lot less. Now, so I would have thought just the inverse would be true, meaning, you know, with less buildable land forecast with the different modeling, you would expect less housing available. And of course, we're interested in just the opposite, I think. But this model, if we have less buildable land, whichever model you use, then it feeds other aspects of what we're doing that would result in perhaps opening up more of the open growth area, but ultimately would have the inverse impact. If we, if the model shows that we have less buildable land and we make a policy decision to say, no, we don't want that. We want more buildable land, it will ultimately result in an output of the process of increasing the availability of of land for housing. Now, we just had a meeting that the governor sent a representative, a policy leader, on the homeless situation for the state. And it clearly, he said, as we have heard over and over again, that the primary cause of homeless situation is the lack of affordable housing, and that's caused by the lack of inventory, the lack of housing. So I mean, from my point of view, that's what we want to get to, from affordable housing to housing of all kinds available for our growing population. So that's a slide that shows new housing capacity. Am I reading, interpreting that correctly, that ultimately the output would reverse that number if we were to open up, if we were to adopt this model, BIA, and I think you're calling it version three, that ultimately, we, the process will allow more housing capacity, not less, as this slide shows?
Do you want to take a shot at that, Jose or Oliver? Do you want me to?
You know, I will. Go ahead, Bob. If I have to add anything, I will.
So that is correct, that if we don't have enough capacity, it needs to be addressed. So by saying we don't have enough capacity in version three, it does need to be addressed, I guess. There is, as I understand it, if it comes in too low, we don't have the capacity inside our urban growth boundary, the buildable lands review process says we need to look at extraordinary measures. Why do we not have land in onsite our urban growth boundary anymore? Because we said we have enough land inside our urban growth boundary. One way to address that would be increased density. I'm not sure that the way that it gets addressed is expanding the boundary. That's beyond what I'm understanding.
And I, I, I don't have anything to add, Councillors. I think Bob summarizes that because we are currently looking at the, the current UGB that was sized. So that was sized to accommodate the growth that we were planning for. So if we were to now ensure, because we are not yet in the process of looking at the periodic review of the comp plan, that is at the time based on the population forecast or growth that the council and the cities would pick on, that would be the determinant of how far we expand the boundary. But in terms of this exercise, it's just to say, within the existing boundary, what are we, what are we showing? And I think Bob is correct. If we are now ensuring that we no longer have sufficient land to accommodate the growth that takes us to twenty thirty-five, we have to do what is called reasonable measures and sort of expanding the boundary. And I believe someone like Jamie will agree. That's all I have to add.
So I don't know whether anybody else wants to chime in, but it sound, the way that I heard Councillor Medjig interpreting this is, I think, opposite of how I understand it. If we show there is not enough land to build houses, if we show fewer, the, the ability, or fewer households, fewer houses, fewer lots, we're showing reality rather than showing more. Do you see what I'm saying? In other words, we have to do something, whether it's density, or we address it by expanding or going into the urban growth boundary. Further out, I mean, expanding the urban growth boundary of cities, you know, are able to do that. So I don't know, somebody, somebody who can understand this better maybe can chime in.
Madam Chair, I think you've just said exactly what I was saying, only that this slide kind of depicts the inverse of what the output ultimately is desired. So that was my question. I think we're on the same page of understanding.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Madam Chair.
Councillor, I would never suggest that I understand this more than than you do, for sure. But nevertheless, I'll chime in just a bit. The problem, Councillor Medjig,
with having some of, like, say, for instance, in in version five, that additional market factor not taken out, is that it can show that land is available that really isn't, that isn't convertible. And by that, it could mean, you know, fifty different things. It could mean that it's long haul trucking, truck parking lots, or it could be polluted property that's too expensive to clean up, or it could be land that's corporately held for future uses. And it's, if it's not taken out in that market factor, it's not really available for development. So the reason for taking it out is to make it reflect the reality of what is available. So yes, indeed, we want, we need to make land available for building, but it's not by putting into the model land that isn't convertible. Does that make sense?
Councillor Medjig, she's, I agree. What you've stated, Councillor Barman, was what I was trying to articulate. Sorry. Do you, is, is that what you understand, Councillor Medjig?
Yeah, I guess I inarticulately was just criticizing that new housing capacity by VBL land use depiction. It was just showing the inverse of what we hope to achieve. You know, with the version that I am now favoring after this presentation and other slides that we've seen in the past, we do, I'm agreeing with both of what you just both said. I was just, this one slide just caught me by surprise because it really was showing the inverse of what we were hoping to achieve with an output. This is what I consider an input.
Madam Chair.
Councillor.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, actually. Bob, can you talk about, maybe just readdress this vacant platted lots topic and how that's different now from what it was in our last models? I know this is a new, a new measure, and I just, and the impacts on how that affects the model?
I think that's one of the interesting things about the change from the baseline to the current model is, if you look at the baseline, you'll see that we have a ton of houses, thirty-five thousand houses as residential low-density, and that number drops going into the PAC project. And the reason it drops is we've kind of put a finer point on where those houses are coming from. And one of the big ones was the vacant platted lots, where we show there's twenty-seven hundred vacant platted lots that are really in the development pipeline. And what used to happen in the old model was those would, once they're below, a lot is less than five thousand square feet, we'd say it's not buildable, and we'd throw it out. And now we say that lot is actually platted and is in the development process, and we don't do any more deductions on it either. We just say that we take that lot as having one additional house on it. So even if a lot was greater than five thousand in the past, it would still get all the deductions on it to the point that it really underrepresented the number of houses we were going to get out of it. So that is a big change to the model that really improves the accuracy of it.
Okay, I think, and I see that in all of these models, I think, that we include that. Okay. And then I know we've had a lot of discussion about this, and I assume we'll have more discussion about it, but this deduction for parks and schools infrastructure. So I don't know who wants to take this up. I just want to understand, I think we were looking for some verification on that number, the parks and schools deduction, and whether we counted those parcels inside the urban growth boundary that are owned by schools and that are already taken up as parks land, and whether we manage this on the demand side or we manage it on the supply side in the model. So and if we're going to change that methodology, how do we move from counting it in the supply side, which is what we've done in the past, I'm sorry, counted it on the, the, which we hadn't done in the past? And in the past, we've, sorry, in the past, we've counted it on the demand side. If we're going to move to count it on the supply side with this twenty point seven, additional twenty point seven percent for parks and schools, how do we manage that transition, I guess, is my question, if that's what the council is considering doing? And then how do we get this twenty point seven percent of parks and schools, that number verified as ground truth in some way that that's really an accurate number to predict?
That's a great question. I think we have not looked at how much the, really, I've in-depth looked at how much offsite infrastructure has been generated over the years. I think there's some challenges in it, and that we have to rely on the cities to help us with that. For example, if we look at the county, and we've gone through a lot of work in the assessors database to classify all the land the county owns by who manages it, so we can easily pull out the parks project property, parks property, for example. If we look at Camas, for example, they just have it owned by the city of Camas. So it's a little bit harder to identify which ones are parks, but we can take a look at that. We have certainly not looked at the amount of offsite infrastructure that has occurred at all for the vacant lands model. I think that's what we're hearing from Jerry Olson, others, there's a lot of offsite infrastructure we're not accounting for. And we have not, as part of this study, did, we did not do a big review of how much offsite infrastructure has occurred. We could. I think that was the goal of the PAC project team, was to go ask, what do we think we're missing, and try and do that research on those topics.
So Bob, I thought I had heard in Councillor Olson's question, the portion that it's kind of a blip on our radar right now is the schools, you know, we just pushed off the capital plans from schools because of the pandemic. And I, I thought I heard that in Councillor Olson's question is that how do, how will we get to basically get through that blip and get some ground truth to what the impacts of school growth would have?
Good follow-up. Good follow-up question. Sorry about that. We do have a very good handle on school-owned property, so we could do that analysis to see, has the amount of school-owned property changed over the past?
And would you get, would you look at over the past, like, since the last update?
Or? That's what would council like to see?
Over the last ten years? I'm curious about, when we talk about, you know, what we've already counted in terms of parks and schools.
So most of the studies we've been doing to date have been starting in twenty sixteen, because that's the start of the plan in the current urban growth boundary. Looking at school property, that's a pretty short window, but it's still, that's reality. We can go back to about two thousand and seven with reliable data, or the, kind of get to really all data, and it gets a little bit less reliable.
And one thing, we talked about this briefly yesterday, I'd be curious about if we're counting already existing properties inside the urban growth boundary for schools and parks. And then historically, we've gone to cities and schools to talk about what they anticipate in the future and manage that potential growth on the demand side. Have there been instances or occurrences where large parcels were purchased by schools or for park projects that were not accounted for? And so, you know, has that happened over the last ten years or since the oh-seven comp plan? And is there a way to kind of go back and take a rearview mirror, look at that, to see if that's something that has occurred? And if so, in what way? And what impacted it now?
That would be more on Jose's side to look at the capital facilities plans than the GIS side. I will point out that, you know, over the years, I, as I've looked at and ground truth, looking at school property, you do see schools acquiring and selling property. I know one that used to stand out for me was a big old school site in the middle of an industrial area. And I'm like, this is never going to develop into a school. And sure enough, they sold it. So when you look at that, and, you know, I kind of look at more aggregate numbers. If we look at the total amount of school land inside the UGA, for example, you might find between buying and selling, you don't see a lot of change, but it, they kind of manage their land. But we can definitely look at those averages over that time from the GIS side, and I guess we can compare that to the capital facility stuff that Jose has.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't have a huge advocacy one way or the other in terms of how we account for these parcels, just that it's as accurate as it can be for us, so that we, you know, we have an accurate plan going forward, and whether that's managing on the, on the supply side or the demand side, you know, just trying to figure out how the, how we get the best number, predictable number, because it's always, it's always a guess.
At least give us a number that's somewhat reasonable, maybe the magnitude of how much the schools are really changing their, how much land they have.
Yes, and, and Councillor, see if I may, Bob, have answered this question. Thank you for asking. It's a good question. What we are doing in the interim is also reaching out to the school district and parks to see whether there are anything that we are missing, and whether they can provide us some information in terms of their needs, again, focusing on their capital facilities plan. We, we haven't received any feedback yet. I know that we did hear from the city of La Centre, and I believe Battleground, and in terms of their park needs, but not yet from the school district going forward. And I think Bob is correct that we can look back, because I think the issue is that if the school district is buying property, whether it's own residential or commercial or industrial, they're competing with those that develop for profit or for nonprofit, for example. So we don't have yet a good handle going forward of what the school needs are. So we're anticipating that perhaps we'll get that by the time we come to your hearing, or maybe after, before you make a final decision on whether to apply any percentage to account for schools. Typically, is, as Bob indicated, the schools sometimes will surplus land that they already own, and they're entitled to do so. I've mentioned to the council that recently Battleground surplus for the acres that they own in the Mount Vista, no, not Mount Vista, but Mill Creek area, they're entitled to do so. So but, and their needs varies depending on where they are growing, they're seeing growth coming from for their school district. So we will continue to reach out to them to see what we can glean from their capital facilities plan and their needs going forward. But right now, we don't have a very good handle on that. We can look back to see where they have purchased land. For example, Vancouver School District behaves differently. All the school district do, Evergreen may be acquiring property, and we might look back and, you know, reach out to their capital facilities manager to find out where they have acquired property in the last five years or so to give us an idea, you know, what is it and how many acres, because their needs varies, whether they're building a high school, a new high school or middle school, and elementary combined on one site, that has implication or, or in terms of their acreage requirement. So this is what I may call an ongoing dialogue we have to have with the school district to fully understand how they address, how they respond to their needs and what that translates into acreage so that we can plan accurately. Even when you put that in on the demand side, you really Even when you put that in on the demand side, you really don't know. Theoretically speaking, you don't know what is going to happen or how anyone is going to behave, but all that is going to be dependent on the school need and where they're seeing growth coming from.
And Madam Chair, if I could just ask a follow-up to that, because based on prior discussions on this very topic, what I took away were two things. First, we need as much information as possible, much fidelity as possible in all areas, and that's what this process is about. But when it comes to parks and schools, I understood you know, just focusing Oliver on the acreage, you know, in the grand scheme of things, whatever adjustment there is with parks and schools, it really is a very small portion of this entire process that it would have, unless something phenomenal was planned by the schools or parks in growth, that it would be really an incremental, a small incremental change to this overall process. Am I characterizing that correctly, that parks and schools will really have very little impact? Although we, you know, I'm very much in favor of fidelity and putting a finer point to all of this. Will it have much of an impact on the overall process?
So to be honest with you, I don't know, but in everything would, I don't know, because sometimes the demand is driven by your population. For example, you know, do you need five acres per thousand? So it depends on your population and the growth that any of the cities are assigned to. And then they go through their own community effort to determine how many acres would they need for park? Would that be a community park? Would that be a neighborhood park? So that's, to me, is driven by growth. Similarly, for schools, their acreage need will also be dependent on growth and where growth is coming from. But the magnitude of how many acres, that I cannot answer because in some cases, like I said, they co-locate middle school and elementary. When they do that, their acreage need for that may be 40 acres. And so for, if it's new high school, the acreage need may be much larger. So we have to depend on the anticipated growth for each of the cities in terms of parks and for school, where their needs are. To be able to come to a number, but what that number will be, I don't know, sir.
I think that one of the points of adding or the concern about not taking into account schools and parks, when you know, when you're, when you have land in a certain area and you're going to build up, then of course that population is going to increase for, for both needs, schools particularly. And I know schools, you know, when they plan for their, you know, what, what amount they are going to charge the taxpayers, they're pretty, they know at that point what they think their population is going to be, how, who they think they're going to serve, et cetera, in, in the near future. So it, it, it does vary, I'm sure, because of where the growth takes place. But that said, I think the history of what has been required in the past should guide how the future would be depending upon where this growth takes place. So I think the point about including it, when, if, if you're going to, to do this plan 20 years ahead and there's going to be population growth, you know, schools are going to have to grow too. So we have, I guess we have to do our, our best guess in it, but we do have to include it somehow.
Yeah, and I think historically we've included it on the, on the demand side. And again, and I guess I'm wondering if we have X number of acres, Oliver or Jose or Bob, we have, let's say we have, you know, 17,000. I don't have the acre, we have X number of acres that we know or we believe are available for residential growth. Then our parks, parks plan requires we have X number of parks per per number of households. Has that been accounted for? Or is it only existing parcels? And maybe that's where the BIA is headed is like, if we are, if we have this many parcels or acres that we're trying to plan for, we know our parks plan requires us to build this many parks per this amount of population or residential growth. And if we're not counting that, then maybe that's where they're, where they're coming from.
I do think that is it. And I'm sorry to interject, but I believe that that is the point that they're trying to make is that if that's needed for schools and parks, it can't be used for homes. So can't be used for residential. So it has to be part of the plan. Got to remove those acres because you're not going to be able to build houses on them. You got to have parks and schools.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, and those are already inside the urban growth boundary, already account, parcels already accounted for that are in the existing inventory.
It's Jerry Olson. If I can. Those numbers came from me, so maybe I can clarify it. Both parks and schools operate on a function of a population. Parks is acres per thousand people. Schools reduces itself down to children per household, household generates the need for schools. And, and they're both based on the capital facilities plan that's driving the school impact fee and the park impact fee. So it's pretty, pretty routine formula. Each park district has variation of the formula. I picked Vancouver and Camas for the parks, just because I didn't do all of them. So that, and even those numbers, there was a percent variation between the two. Schools is more uniform. I sat down with Todd Hornstein from the Vancouver School District and the attorney for ESD 112, and we had a meeting, went over my methodology, the numbers and the students per school, et cetera. And they said, yes, that's, that's exactly what we're using because I took it from the capital facility plan. So that's where the numbers came from. They're always buying ahead. Each household pays X amount of dollars that goes to purchase school land and park land, and that's what is reflected in that percentage for the next 20 years.
Jerry, can I piggyback on that? And I, I want to take it out of the theoretical realm and move it into the real world realm, because I think real world examples of how this, this works is good. So for instance, in the 2007 plan, we did a large expansion in the Camas urban growth area and in particular the north for the lake, for instance, and we planned accordingly for, for jobs and housing. And there was a 40-acre site that had, was slated to be residential development and yet that, that site got acquired for a K through eight school. And there wasn't any accounting for that on the, the need side of the equation. So here it is, we have and so it'll show up now in Bob's model as acquired, you know, school, but there wasn't a forecast of what, what was needed there in the new, new growth area. And so this, this is a way, I think we're just trying to say, hey, when we're either expanding growth boundaries or accommodating additional population through upzoning, we do have to account that there may be sites that haven't been acquired yet that will take land out of the inventory for the various land uses that may, may exist. And this is our best not guess, but this is our, our best methodology here is what, what Barry's pointing to is you know, bound in there in your guys' park plan as well as the school district's own planning documents.
I have one further thing. Until through the 2016 plan, there was no reduction in the available land for either schools or parks.
So is there a model right now of these five options that reflects that? Is it, is it option five?
Yes, that, that subtracts 20 and 20%.
Okay, okay, good. Okay, are there other questions or comments? I appreciate those comments. It does help to explain it. Thank you, both Barry and Jane.
I do have a few things when, when we can put up the other slide.
Okay, if there are no more questions on these, on this particular presentation, we can move to the presentation that was created for us to give kind of a justification about these last couple of models. So go ahead, Eric.
Okay. And I've got a few things and I want to kind of back up a little bit to kind of like the history of why we're here and kind of the purpose, because I think it really helps understand what this, what the goal was of this, of this process. So you know, one of the, and first also, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to participate. But why this committee was set up is there was, there was a House bill that was put out there that basically required the agencies and the, and the jurisdictions to revisit their, their buildable lands model. And the reason they're doing that is because it became apparent that there was a lack of buildable land and that it also is creating a affordability issue. So one thing that I, I guess I had, I had trouble with is at the end of this process, the goal was to address this need and this problem. The problem was lack of land. And that we didn't have as much buildable land as we thought. And then the affordability issue. So at the end of this process, somehow, you know, I, I guess I couldn't comprehend how we came up with an outcome that said that we have more land than we thought we had. And because of that, we're going to need to add less to our urban growth boundary to meet our population demand. And that is exactly opposite of what we're seeing in the field. You know, what we're seeing is it's very hard to find developable property. The property we can find is very expensive to develop. And because of the lack of supply, it's raising prices up to an unsustainable, unaffordable level. So that's, that's really, I guess, the, the challenge that we saw. And we look at these models and I think the councillors had some good questions. It's like, well, the existing model showed that, for example, 44,000 and this is, this is not what we need. This is, this is basically the inventory we have right now in our urban growth areas. So if we show more capacity here, what it means is that when we go back to the comp plan, we're going to need to add less. We're going to need to add less density. We're going to need to add less area. So that's how this works. This is the first piece. It gets addressed again, once we look at the comprehensive plan. So how, how did we get here? Like, why did we end up showing more? We ended up finding more available land in our urban, on our current boundary because of a few things. I mean, some of them were just correcting errors. The other one is, I think we counted, we're looking at counting and meeting our need by putting housing in commercial zones. And it is, it is real. That, that is part of the solution, but it's not the whole solution. And the other piece too is that's not new. That was already in the model. That, the problem that we, we perceived was already there. And by adding this in, it means that the model was off by even more somewhere else. This is shadow inventory. And we kind of see this in this chart. And you look at that time period at the bottom, in this period, there was a severe lot shortage. You look at that, that last kind of housing boom, that 2005, 2006. If you were developing property at that time or doing consulting, there was no land available at all. However, our model, the model that we're using to plan shows that there was 45 to, yeah, let's 45,000 units of capacity in the model, but they weren't there. There's some kind of shadow inventory. Something is wrong with the model. And that's why we're here to revisit it. So the outcome saying, you know, we actually have more than that. It's not real. It's, it's shadow. It's somewhere. We're overestimating the capacity. That's why we really wanted to dig into this and try to find a solution and, and try to solve that problem. So and the other piece too is when you're looking at putting all the density or a lot of our density in high density and commercial, there's some other unintended consequences. Some of it's self fulfilling. So the reason why we're pushing residential into commercials is because there's no, no residential land already. And that's a problem. There's also, you know, the waterfront, I think skewed things a little bit. It's a great project. A lot of need for it. It provides additional capacity. It is something we probably should count. And it's something that we needed and it addresses part of the problem. What it doesn't do, however, is create a diversity in housing types. So we're only creating one thing. We're creating rental units in high density. And there is a need for that, but that's not the only need. We need, we need suburban lots, we need lots on acreage. Everybody has a different idea of the American dream. And I think we want to make sure that we provide that opportunity in those diversity of housing types. That's a policy decision. It's not just numbers. That is how we want to shape our community. Do we want a community of all apartments where our, our citizens are basically all renters? It, it basically takes away the opportunity for ownership, equity, generational wealth, and it really impacts the, the disadvantage probably more than the people who have already owned homes because they're building off their equity. So we're not looking about, for us, I would say, we're looking about our kids. We're looking about new people in our community. Growing that and making sure they have the same opportunities we had. It's for our kids. And making sure they have that American dream. So kind of to summarize, you know, we don't disagree that counting the commercials is appropriate, but there's that just means there's some bigger issues because we still have this shadow inventory and we do not have the capacity that we're saying we have. So we identified in our, in our original letter, a few things that we thought could be the problem. And one was the market factor. The market factor maybe actually, I wouldn't say there's a silver bullet, but that may be one of the most significant issues of why our model's off. And that's what this kind of, this display right here shows. It shows, and to kind of go to this, this, this slide. This explains the housing capacity by year. And, and there's, there's some text kind of below of what the market factor really is. And the market factor is basically a factor correlating to the land added to UGA that doesn't develop in the 20-year cycle. And this can be due to multitude of factors, including willingness to sell, price expectations and a lack of available infrastructure and funding necessary to serve that land. So you kind of have this, what you see is this is the burn rate. And it kind of shows, I'm, I'm pointing on my screen, but you guys can't see that. But it starts at 65,000. It kind of goes down. And at the end of that 20-year cycle, that's basically what that market factor is. It's the land that doesn't convert. And what we're assuming right now, and I'm doing a cumulative of 25%, that's what the county is assuming in their model. Some's on the supply, some's on the demand side. But the reality is, we, a lot more doesn't convert than what we're showing. It's probably closer to 35 or higher. And there's quite a bit of justification for changing that, I believe. One, just looking at past data. And then you also see in recent years, that slope of the burn rate has flattened. As the UGA matures, we've seen that slope flatten. So trying to take the past and like, you know, 20 years ago, what we're seeing today is a little different rate. And it'd be appropriate to kind of match that. So we had justification for going to that 35% market factor. We also talked about infrastructure. We're, I don't believe, and the group did not believe that we're counting enough infrastructure in the model. We're losing that land and that's not true inventory. So we don't have the capacity that we show in our model. And that's, that's what we tried to convey in our previous comments. And it's all infrastructure, it's open space, it's school and parks, like Jerry mentioned. And those are kind of the big, the big items that we, we looked at. So it, it's a complex issue. But I guess in conclusion, there, there's probably more than five options. There's kind of an infinite number of options here with the, the different factors. But I guess what I'd ask you guys, when you guys go to the hearing next week and what, what was the problem we're trying to solve? And does this solve it? Or does it at least help solve it? And what I'm seeing is some of these don't solve it. It makes the problem that we were trying to solve worse. And we need to find a solution. There was a, another study by the, by Econ Northwest, and it was a part of this committee, but I thought some very interesting quotes in here. They talked in there all about the lack of capacity. They say housing production has been steady since the 2010s, but the study area still has not produced enough housing units to meet demand. Based on the ratio of housing units produced, the new households formed in the study area over time have been underproduction, have been an underproduction of 2,571 units. A few other things they say in the study is like in Clark County, home prices in the study area are increasing out of reach of middle income households looking to buy. They also go on to say households at the lower and middle part of the income spectrum often have no choice but to pay increasingly high rents because homeownership is out of reach. And, and finally, they say Clark County will need to plan for thirteen thousand two hundred eighty-one new dwelling units within the study area through twenty thirty-five to address studies, study areas under production of housing and develop new housing demanded by population growth. So I found it very interesting that we're showing in this study that we have way more capacity than we thought. And then another study that's being done as part of our housing options is showing that we don't have enough. We're underproducing. We have affordability issues and land issues. I just thought that was really kind of ironic and we're basically with both these committees, we're trying to solve the same problem. And I guess what I ask of you guys is to make sure that whatever decision you make, we don't make the problem worse. And we're moving in the right direction. And we're addressing the, we're addressing the problem. So sorry for going on. I tried to talk quickly. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I think that was helpful, Eric. Are there questions or comments of the council?
I do have a question.
Hey, Councilman Andy.
And thanks, Eric, for all the work that you've been doing. And in this slide particularly, I think you articulated what I was trying to say earlier as far as that inverse review of, of what the housing inventory was. And I think this slide somewhat does that. I do have a question about it. And pretty much focusing on the UGA expansion and then to the right of the slide. You know, you show the downward impact of the twenty-five percent. And then you show the proposed of thirty-five percent. What I'm trying to get my arms wrapped around is the observed flatter burn rate. I mean, that seems to parallel the thirty-five percent line. And so I'm not sure what you're, I mean, the twenty-five, the downward trend on the twenty-five percent compared to the thirty-five percent is certainly an improvement, but it looks like it parallels the observed flatter burn rate. So I, what is that depicting? What I would ultimately want to get to is, well, how do we, how do we open up the aperture with smart planning that actually matches our need as far as inventory? So could you tell me what the observed flatter burn rate and the thirty-five percent, you know, how they compare? Because they, by that depiction, it looks like they have the same impact.
Um, it's, it's a little hard to explain, but let me, let me try to sum it up. So we've based that burn rate, and this is basically the absorption rate of the land we put in the model. Like, how quick is it going out? How quick is it developing? And by doing that, we're saying, you know, why aren't, and then if it doesn't develop in that twenty-year period, there's a reason for it. And we need to account for it because that's a pattern that we're trying to recognize in the model. It's not really based on science. It's based on data analysis. So we're looking at, there's, there's reasons why property that we added to the UGA doesn't develop. And sometimes it's demand. Sometimes it's, you know, just unwillingness to sell. There's a lot of factors. There are a lot of it, to tell you the truth, is the lack of infrastructure and the lack of funding for infrastructure. And it just doesn't make sense. It's not cost effective to develop a land when, for example, there's no sewer infrastructure there. And to develop that land, you got to put in millions and millions of dollars of pump stations and infrastructure that a developer can't do. So those are in the model. It's shadow inventory. And that's the problem. So if we're looking at having that land available to meet our need, it's not really there. And we try to account for that with the market factor, saying, you know, this land, at the end of the time, there's twenty-five percent of land that's not going to develop due to these factors. And what we're seeing is by, and, and, you know, to tell you the truth, I had a little, I've, I've worked on this for years, but I still didn't have a full grasp of how the market factor was, was calculated. We had a great discussion the other day with Bob Poole. He explained it on this burn rate, and it really helped me understand it. So I wanted to draw a picture. And he's like, well, how we come up with that is basically the burn rate. And one thing that became apparent by looking at that data is the burn rate that we're using has a very steep pitch to get to twenty-five percent. And we're not seeing that today. So looking at the data, basically from the last UGA expansion where it jumped up, that is a slower burn rate. So what we can expect is as, and I even think it flattens out more, as we get further and further along the comp plan, it flattens out more because stuff that was not available is still not available. All the easy stuff is gone. And we don't always account for that in the next cycle. So this, this rate is slowing as we mature as a, as a UGA. And right when you bump it up, the easy stuff goes quick. You get a pretty nice slope. And as the easy stuff's gone, it flattens out. And we're seeing that, and we're seeing just a maturing of our community. So things don't absorb as quickly. But when you look at the last few years, that rate, and you push it down to where we kind of showed that last expansion, it, it, it kind of shows where that thirty-five percent would have been if we didn't add new land. And we're kind of at, we're closer to thirty-five percent than we are twenty-five percent left. Does that, does that help at all?
Yes, thank you, Eric.
So I'm just going to ask a question. Of these five models then or options, but I know, Eric, you said there are a multitude of options, some that we don't have. But of what, what we have run at this point, what do you folks believe is the best version for us?
Well, I, I think our recommendation was the number five on here, the BIAV three. And that takes into, it may be a little on the over conservative side. And personally, I would maybe be somewhere between the three and the five. But we don't have, the, the three talks about the market factor. I do think that is one of the most important things to add in there, and we need to plan for it ahead of time. We could do it on the, with the comp plan, but I, I think the risk is higher. We're not planning ahead. We're reacting instead of planning. And I think the better decision is to plan instead of react. I know one of our recommendations was not to count anything in, in the commercial conversion. I don't know. I think we will see that. I think that's a piece of it. But I also think it skews things so much that it has unintended consequences. So should we count some? It's, it's real information. It's probably defensible. But I think the other pieces too, planning for schools, planning for infrastructure, planning for a true market factor is very defensible. And it's more accurate. It shows what we're actually seeing. Going back to this drawing, how do we deal with the issue of the shadow inventory where we say we have this capacity that we don't really have? And because of that, we're not appropriately planning for our future. And that's the problem that we're trying to solve here. So by any of these models, if you look at the baseline, the baseline shows forty-four, nine thirty-six. Anything that increases that, I don't think is, is reality. There's some reason why that's off. It's actually not solving the problem that we're here to solve. So anything that bumps that up from the baseline, I think is, is actually a disservice to our community. And I want to make sure that we're addressing that issue and are creating more inventory to address the apparent need, or not, not the parent need, the, the need in the community.
Madam Chair.
Hi, Councilor Olson.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. And I appreciate your, your background and information. And Jerry, nice to see you. It's been a long time. I, I have a question about maybe from Bob or, I'm sorry, my dog is chewing on a little spooky toy. With regard to the shadow inventory, inventory that was brought into the urban growth boundary, maybe in the last, not twenty sixteen, but the oh-seven comp plan, is there any way to get at some of those parcels that we maybe counted as developable or is available for development and actually weren't? And haven't been in the last fourteen to twenty years? Is there a way to get at those, get at those parcels? It's way about, you know, a real look at, at what Eric has demonstrated here in this graph. Because what, going forward, and Eric, you said it a couple of times. We need inventory. We need parcels. We need land. We have a crazy situation here in Clark County where, you know, housing is incredibly expensive and difficult for most folks to afford and rents are falling. So how do we, how do we get there? And then how do we make it defensible? And that's really where, where I think we're all trying to get to is making sure we have the best model going forward, accounting for all of the things that, that are difficult to account for to the best of our ability. So I guess back to my question. Bob, is there any way to get to those parcels that were included in the last couple of comp plans that didn't develop, that we counted as developable?
I think the biggest portion of those are the ones that are in urban holding, and that manifests itself in two ways. There are the areas that are in urban holding, like Hundred Seventy-Ninth, which just opened up with lots of acres and acres of vacant land. We also have all the urban holding that is in the UGAs for the other cities besides Vancouver that is really can't develop until they annex it, until they have the services to, to, to meet the demands on the property. It's really waiting for sewer before they can develop it. So I think one way to improve this graph perhaps would be to add in the amount of land that is in urban holding that is really not in play. I think that's one of the biggest wins. I think when you look at the urban growth, the VBLM, you do see a big growth band. It's a, you know, it keeps expanding out. So the stuff we've added most recently is the stuff that has not developed. If you move to the core of the older stuff inside the ninety-six boundary, we've seen, we're continuing to see a lot of development in there, and there's not much vacant land left. So when you start to say there is this baseline and market factor, we're really not seeing that. But again, when you look at Vancouver, the urban core, the ninety-six GMA boundary was all on very good land. As we're moving out, we're getting into more and more of the wetlands. So we're really not sure how much of that's absolutely not developable. And right now, it seems to be developing as it comes out of urban holding. Not a great answer, but that's what I got.
Well, I think we also had a proposal by the building industry for ground truthing and creating a system where some of the land that is not converting because it's wet or, but keeps being put back into the vacant lands that's available is to actually have something similar to FEMA. And that was in the letter that was sent by the, the three groups on May fifth. Might want to take a look at that letter. It's number, number five of the proposals.
That's something we've brought up quite a bit, especially with regards to industrial, you know, and we have really serious wetlands, real wetlands that are not going to develop. Why are we comprehensive planning them industrial? Right? And what we've suggested, what should you make? Those parks and open space? Do the parks and open space come out of the constrained lands? So again, that does seem to be what happens a lot, is is those marginal constrained lands that turn into parks and wreck. So it's all kind of interconnected.
Okay. Are there other questions of the council or comments? I don't hear anything. I, I really want to thank you folks for participating and taking as much time with this as you have. But it's really important to the community. And so so I just have to, we are just very thankful for your input in this. And thank you, Bob, for continuing to run our little, our proposal. So with that, I guess, I don't know that we, we need to make any actual decisions today that may come with our hearing. Is, is that, is that right? Is that where we should be?
That is correct, Council. You'll consider this at the hearing next week.
Okay, so before we go then and complete this, are there any other questions or comments, clarification needed? I would open it for that before we close then.
So I just have a very quick question. It's something that Eric said that caught my attention as far as, you know, planning ahead. I'm all about that in every aspect of what we do. So density, you know, changing densities, you know, we're not, the county is not a city. And I understood that always as a tool. But that would be in relation to what Eric said as far as being a reaction. Instead of planning, trying to fix what we've got through increased densities. And certainly, we do have some rural centers and some, some very visible examples. Eric, is that what you were getting at? As far as the ability to impact all this by just simply changing densities, increase density? Is that a reaction versus a planning? Is that what you, one of the things you were referring to?
It is. And I think it happens naturally. I mean, it's increased density can be a reaction to not properly planning for diversity of housing types. And when we don't have land available, our community has no other option but to go into high density residential because that's all they can afford. And, and that's really a policy decision. But and, and this is one piece of the puzzle. It's not the whole puzzle. Making sure we plan ahead and have available land is one piece of it. Then there's the bigger piece. And I think Bob, I mean, he alluded to it as well with the urban holding is one of the reasons why we have the shadow inventory is there's no funding for infrastructure. So we're counting this capacity and we haven't properly done that either. And we, we do need to make sure we plan for that infrastructure. Otherwise, the shadow inventory is always going to be there. Now, the easy way to address population is just increased density. You can put it in the existing infrastructure. It is part of the solution. It's not all of the solution. And we need to plan for both. And I guess what I'm afraid of is that what we're, the direction we're going is basically saying, we're going to plan for our future by just increasing density everywhere. And what we don't do, we, we change our community into something that I, it's a policy decision, not, not pure numbers. Is that the vision we want for our community? Do we want to have everyone living in, in high-rise apartments? Or do we want to keep that feel that Clark County has? And to do that, you actually need to expand. You need to create that diversity of housing type. So, so my goal is to encourage that you understand the process. I'm not here to make the decision for you. I want to make sure you understand the unintended consequences of the decision and how all these little pieces work together. And what we end up at the end of the day, because I think in the last plan, we significantly underplanned for multiple reasons. One, the VBLM was off. Two, we adopted a population growth factor that was half of what we're actually observing. So not only do we have a lack of land we added, but we're, we have people moving to the community twice as fast as we planned for, and we underplanned. So the only thing we can do is have more density, squeeze more people in the same space, which, which has unintended consequences. That's, I guess, a long answer to your simple question, but hopefully it explains it.
Madam Chair, may I offer two
Thank you, Eric.
two observations. My, my two, my two observations are, are one, I want to take us up the abstraction ladder a little bit. And then the other is just to acknowledge that we do have a new amendment to the Growth Management Act. And I just want to touch briefly on that. I think to Eric's point, I think it's, it's well taken. And you have to understand that Clark, Clark County is in a bit of a unique situation in that we are right adjacent to another state that also has its own growth management rules. And as somebody that does, does work in Oregon, you know, my observation over the years is that Clark County is, is sort of the metro urban growth boundary's dirty little secret in that. You know, they, they, they try to inflate their numbers to say, we've got all this ability to increase density by, by doing high-rise development and the city of Portland and, you know, and then they go around and pass these new rules like inclusionary zoning that make it really difficult to do that. But from a, if you take it from a metro wide perspective, it's, it's like one of those balloons that the, the clown at the, the kid's birthday show is working on. When you squeeze it in one, one area too much, it starts to pop up in different, different places. And so I think that's, that's partly why we see, we've seen a lot of historical growth in, in Clark County. It's because it's, it's where it's affordable to, to do it. It's you know, we're, we're kind of the relief valve in some ways for what, what's going on on the other side of the river. And so I think we need to be cognizant of, of that as well. It's, you know, we're, we're in a metropolitan area. We're not, we're not just, you know, confined by, by our county limits. Beyond that, the, there is a, a, a bill that just passed. I think it's House Bill twelve twenty, which is a significant amendment to the, the GMA. It's one of the largest amendments I think I've seen in, in my career certainly. And it's really sort of echoes a lot of these concerns that the realtors raised earlier and why we're studying the vacant buildable lands model to begin with. And it's really to attack this, this housing problem. And it specifically amend the, the language of the, the housing goal. And it's really to attack this, this housing problem. And it specifically amend the, the language of the, the housing goal as well as, you know, ladled on all these other requirements that, that we'll need to do as part of the future comprehensive planning process. And I, I think it would be, be, um, good of us all to, to account for that, take a look at that language. I'm certainly going to raise that in, in testimony next week is what I, what I think it, it may require of us. But it, it's talking about some of these things that we're, we're talking about right now. It's, we, we need to plan for of these variety of housing types. And it's not just trying to focus on increasing density and doing high-rise development. There, there's also passing mention of, of infrastructure in there. And I think, you know, to, to Bob's earlier point, you know, the, these, these twenty year plans, it, it takes a long time. Once you, you create the, the available inventory to move from that line, that, that artificial line on the map to actually getting development on the ground. It's, you know, you guys just experienced that with, with one hundred and seventy-ninth, for instance. It, it took us from two thousand and seven until last year, basically to get a, um, that lifted from urban holding. And we, we have gotten, you know, I did two, two subdivision approvals. Eric was involved with one up there recently. And, you know, that, that will get built this summer. Houses will start going on next year. But that's, that's darn near almost twenty years into a, a planning cycle. And so we're, we're, we're playing catch up and it's not a, it's not a good place to be. And, you know, I think that the intent here is just to, to kind of be eyes wide open, correct the baseline and then understand what we need to do going forward on the market side to ensure that we can achieve our, our community goals, which I think is having enough houses for, for people to afford. And, and hopefully we can use that to, you know, have our families remain here, uh, as well as attract to good employment and go forward with that. So. That's all I wanted to say. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Jamie. Other comments, questions? If not, I thank you again, staff, for putting together this work session for us. And industry is just very valuable information and, and we appreciate it because we do want to plan. We want to plan properly. And for the benefit of our community. And so now it's up to us, you know, as policymakers to, to choose the right thing. So. We'll look at that some more and we will have our hearing on the, is it the fifteenth?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yeah. Okay. All right. With that then, once again, thank you all for your time. We're going to close this work session. And we will go into the Clark County.